Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, Jan—uh, June—January, I'm about to do—June 15th at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall next to the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28, and this session will be rebroadcast again Friday at noon. And we're also streaming live on our Internet website, www.townofyountville.com. And we would ask, while you're in council chambers this evening, if you would please turn off your cellphones and pagers. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Chilton?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Mayor Sossaman?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Dunbar is excused.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, closed session report. Is there any reportable action from the closed session of June 14th?
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, yes, there is. Yesterday, at the special meeting, the town council heard two items, actually three items. One was the labor negotiation items. There was no final action on that item, but as it relates to the two items under anticipated litigation, there was one item that related to a claim that has been filed against the town by Swank Construction. And the council unanimously rejected the claim and directed the city attorney's office to send notice off to Swank Construction to reject—rejecting their claim. That was a 5-0 vote, with Vice Mayor Dunbar making the motion and Councilmember Chilton seconding the motion. Second reportable action, Madam Mayor, is that on the anticipated litigation matter, the town council also unanimously directed the town attorney to finalize and file a complaint for damages against Swank Construction Incorporated and Gerald Swank and DOES 1 through 60. But that was a unanimous 5-0 vote, with Vice Mayor Dunbar making the motion and Councilmember Dutton seconding the motion. And that is the report from closed session.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to this evening's agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a—two new attachments handed out for seven E exhibits, and those are in the bucket for the public. And in addition, we've received a request to continue the public hearing for the Yountville and Farmhouse items, so when we get to that item, we'll need to continue to date certain.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the continuation of item nine and the added items, as the town clerk outlined.
Number nine, we'll need to do a date certain on that item.
When we get to that.
Yes.
Got it.
Do you want to restate that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated by the town clerk.
Actually, we just need a quick clarification, and I apologize. The item you're continuing to a date certain is item 10.
Item 10, sorry, Jeff. Item 10.
I didn't see that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pox, none, that motion carries. Thank you. Item six is public comment. Anything—anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Anyone? Public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, move on to consent calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar other than those stated by the town clerk?
Move for adoption of consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pox, none, that motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, presentations. Presentation by Napa City County Library Director, Dennis Krymeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here today to talk to you about the recently approved cost allocation model that the Board of Supervisors approved May 18th. And I do believe you received a copy of all of that information. When I started about two and a half years ago, and I had to start working on the contracts between all the cities, one of the things that I noticed was that there was great variation in how we allocated costs to—for extended hours—to the different jurisdictions. And also, there was no way to determine where library-funded hours ended and charges to the cities and towns for extra hours began. So I started a fiscal analysis to where we—so we could really look at what it costs per hour. About—right about that time, the grand jury also recommended that we do cost analysis for all our branches and do cost accounting. So that was the beginning of this quite a long process. The library contracted with Bay Area Economics, and they worked on our fiscal analysis. It took about a year. There's a great big, long spreadsheet that I didn't share, because it's very—it's probably about, I think, 20 different spreadsheets long. And in it, it really looks at all our operating costs and facilities costs, and really takes a very in-depth look at what it takes to run the library. Once we got all this information, we had to determine how we were going to allocate those costs out. And we toyed around with some different models. We did a lot of research, looking at—to see how other jurisdictions—library jurisdictions determine where library-funded hours began and—or end, excuse me, and extended hours or extra hours begin. After quite a bit of research and looking at the facts and trying to come up with a methodology, we came up with a circulation-based methodology. And what that does is it breaks down our circulation, because we know how much items are—how many items are circulated at each facility. We were able to determine a cost per circulation, which comes out to about $6.86, I believe. And then using that, we were able to allocate those costs based on circulation. We were also able to determine what it costs per hour, per year, to run each library. And that's how we came up with our new allocation model, and it's based on CIRC. Every year, we use—we'll be using the previous year's costs and our current estimated revenues, and also the previous year's circulation to come up with a model. And it allocates hours across the board that way, based on the percentage of CIRC. So what that came to is reallocation of our library hours and of what the library was funding. Previously, for Yountville, we funded 16 hours per week, per year. Under the new methodology, the library will be funding 17.5 hours. Also with that, we have a true cost per hour now. And that cost— Let me get to the right page. And that was in one of the attachments. And that cost per hour, per year, for Yountville is $10,502. That is about a little under $200,000 a year, which is about 3% of the library's overall budget, and also falls right into line with Yountville's circulation, which is about 3% of the total circulation in the county system. So that explains the methodology that we went at. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. Brett Prebula is here. He's our staff analyst, and also Helene Frankie with the CEO's office is here as well.
Good, thank you. Council, have any questions for Dennis? Louis?
When you say 3% of circulation, what does that mean exactly?
Out of our overall circulation, of all the materials that we check out to our cardholders here in Napa County, our—3% of the circulation comes out of Yountville.
So 3% of the number of items that are checked out?
Uh-huh, are checked out here.
Okay, so I—when I was reading through that, it would sound like is—there's like a self-perpetuating—you're open 17 hours a week, so you check out less, and therefore you're open less. What happens?
Well, actually, the way this model works is if your—your library or this—your location circulates more, then we will adjust the figures every year, and we'll be able to fund more hours. Since the new facility opened, your circulation has gone up 33%. So if that trend were to follow, then—the county would take on more responsibility of funding those hours.
Okay, so it's a kind of a demand-per-hour kind of a concept?
Correct. It also helps us know how to allocate our resources and how many materials to buy and where to put our—
So is that 33% included in this year, or is it going to be next year?
That would be next year's.
Okay, good.
Because you do the—you have to wait till the whole year is over to gather all our statistics.
So the next question I have is this concept of a $10,500 per hour cost, and I understand you take the hours and the total cost of it. Our goal, and I'm sure it's your goal, is to have the library open as much as possible. So the idea that for an extra hour for every day of the—you know, every week of the year, that would cost about $205 per hour—I understand the idea of your overhead and your salary, and everybody else is going in there, but the additional cost to the town of opening that bearable cost can't be anywhere close to $210. I mean, you—you know, you have the electricity and the—you know, the computer costs and the staff or two staff, but $210—I think it's what everybody's kind of recoiled at is, I can certainly open for an hour for less than $210 and not increase those other overall costs. And that's—that's what I've been struggling with when I've been looking at these numbers.
I can see that. Well, I—I've called some other libraries and systems that have libraries of varying sizes, and that cost is pretty much on target with other jurisdictions. I talked to Contra Costa today, and they have a small library that would be similar to Yountville. And they are at that cost per year, and that doesn't even include the facilities. So one of the things that we're striving for here in Napa County is we want to really protect our collections, our materials, have a high quali—quality staff that can really help, because things are getting more sophisticated. We have—to have help with computers, online resources, databases. And we want to make sure that when people come into the library, there's something that they want, that they can use, and it's what they need. Many libraries across California are unfortunately cutting their materials budget, they're cutting their staffing, and so when you do that, you diminish what's in the library.
Well, I guess I just get the question—
So it's also materials and things like that.
Well, we have the—just the idea—I mean, the town—what did we contribute last year? Was it $17,000? Was that the same number? So what—I actually feel like the—I mean, I've had many cost accounting classes. What I feel like the library is doing is saying, "We're going to take our total loaded-per-hour cost, we're going to make it fair," and you're actually giving up, on a variable basis, costs that don't really exist. I mean, if you paid each person $50 an hour, you still have $100 an hour for that extra one hour. And you're not buying more materials, you're not buying new computers, and you're not expanding anything. That's what I think is frustrating, is we—we want to give you money, but we're getting so little in return, and it doesn't seem like—if I ran my business and it was $210 an hour to keep it open, I would be bankrupt instantaneously. And I have five employees on it all the time. So I just—I—that's the part we're grappling with, is I understand the taking that—that total and dividing it out per hour, but to say—to be open one additional hour, when the town is going to pay you cash for it, your cost can't possibly go up by $10,000 in—for that additional hour. I don't know, maybe it does, but I can't imagine how it does.
Any more questions?
Just—just one, I'm still a little confused. You said 16 hours, you said 17 and a half hours. So which one is it?
Previously, as of—the this current year, the library funds 16 hours. Under the new cost allocation model in the coming year, in '10, '11, the library will fund 17.5 hours.
So—
Before extended hours.
Okay, before extended hours. So we will be open 17 and a half hours.
Right.
Regardless of any decision.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I just had a few, and yeah, I—I think, Louis, you had a very good point. I think is what you were saying, is that as you laid it out, this is the cost per hour, the number of hours. Now, as those hours get extended, you know, the costs are still the same, so it should drop down considerably as those costs per hour go down. But I think what he's saying is you're pocketing the whole—is you're going to spend that much more money. I have a hard time buying that. That being said, you mentioned circulation. I assume that's a book goes in on.
Anything that you check out, a book, a DVD?
In looking at Appendix A, it looks like here that the total was around $860,000 for the three—for Napa, Yountville, and American Canyon. Calistoga—I don't know if Calistoga's in there or not, they're sort of below the line.
Yeah, they have a separate funding agreement.
For a cost of—excuse me here—6.359. And that—that's $7.39. So you're saying for every transaction, $7.39.
What we did is—
Is what it costs.
We took our total revenue.
Right.
This is our—using a circulation-based model.
I'm doing cost, and not—I'm not doing revenue. I'm doing your cost divided by the circulation, you know, to get a cost—for what was it, costing per? I'm not interested in the revenue side. So you're saying it's costing you a little over $7 for every transaction?
Well, actually, I—I have $6.686. We're looking at the same.
On it—well, I'm looking at Appendix A, total annual cost, $6,359,598 divided by 860,000 above it is $7.39. And that's a total of the three. Now, you may have included other branches in there, I don't know.
The circulation-based model is—the next one isn't in Appendix B? Are those two different types of models?
I—I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking into the microphone. Appendix A is the definition-based cost allocation model, and Appendix B is the circulation-based revenue dispersment model.
Yes, we first started with—
So is it B that you're actually using? Or are they—
The circulate—we're using the circulation-based model.
Okay. That doesn't help much, it's still $6.86. Not much.
Okay. I think people will be aware of that concern. How does that compare with other systems? You mentioned Contra Costa, you talked to that type of thing.
Yeah, it pretty much came out just about the same. And they had—their facilities weren't included. And in ours, we do have to include the facilities.
And just one other question. I noticed in reading through it, and I'm going to compare Yountville with American Canyon. Here, we're roughly 29,000, there at 100,000 circulation, so over three times. In your write-up, you said they have one head librarian, an assistant, and a half-person.
They have a library associate, a library assistant, and a part-time.
Right. We, for less than a—you know, for almost a quarter of that, have two full people. So they—so they're doing—with one-half more person, they're doing three and a half times the business that we are. And I guess my question is, why do we need two people here?
Yeah, well, we need two people for a variety of reasons.
I'd be interested to hear those.
Some of it have to do with county policy, with our double custody for cash handling. That wasn't followed before, so we're trying to be in compliance with county policies and procedures. We're also concerned about liability and safety. We also want to be able to improve our programming. We want consistency, reliability, and to add professionalism. So we are looking at having a standard across the board that we're going to provide for all our libraries. And we believe that having trained professional staff is very important, so that we can have those services that maybe we didn't have before. We really have heard that—from the community—that they want more programming, get more outreach, and by having an extra person there, they can go out, they can go to the schools, they can do storytime, and not have to rely on just volunteers. Right now, pretty much all our programming here in Yountville is volunteer-based, and we want to partner more with the city—the town and—and the school here. So really having—providing dynamic services and—at a professional level, where we can provide the services that we feel that Yountville deserves.
I have a comment on this. You know, I—I—you're missing the—the practicality of this. I went into the library, there were two librarians, they were each in one of the rows helping somebody, there was a lot of other people. I had to sit at the little table, we have a little space, just before I could go down the aisle and look for a book. You know, I think those are great global goals, but they just don't apply to us.
Yeah, there's a question.
Sure.
In your presentation, can you discuss a little bit about the reserve fund policy?
Sure, I would be happy to. Part of this presentation, this board action, was also for—with our fund balance policy, which before, our reserve balance had really no goals or—it's just kind of a big pot of money. So with our reserve fund policy, we identified future needs and what we needed for the future. So we took a general designation, and we have 30% of it remains in general unspecified designation. 70% what was left was—would be dispersed through the different—to the different jurisdictions. We took out of our fund balance $250,000 to each jurisdiction. Yountville already received their 250 when we did the agreement for the new building. And then we took what was left and divided it up. So what it does is it leaves—and we don't have the exact number until the board approves the budget. But I believe there's about—was it 167? It's roughly 167. About $167,000 in Yountville's designated reserves, and that would be for capital improvement down the road or any other projects that we want to do. And every year, then, it's funded by the same percentage. If we have any revenues left over in our contingency fund at the end of the year and our operating budget, it would be transferred over using the—that same formula. So it has a ability to grow.
That sounds positive.
It's also a good parking place. If—say there was a donation, a significant donation, for instance, in Calistoga, they received a—an endowment, and their endowment goes into that fund, so it's reserved for—
That library.
That library.
The circul—talking about the circulation model, I—I had not heard of that before. I don't know much about libraries. But what's the 3%? It comes—it—does it come out to 3%? What was the number?
Roughly, yes.
That really mirrors, like, our population as the county as a whole. I know that the entire county is not in the library system. I think Saint—St. Helena's the only place that's not.
St. Helena's the only one that's not, yes.
Okay. So how does that mirror—I mean, most of the revenues is property tax. Is that correct? How does that mirror—I don't know if you guys know the answer—are property tax contributions to the library system?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
That's something, again, looking at how they define service boundary, because the library system operates the Napa main, and then the four branches, and the service area is larger here than simply just the town limits.
Yeah, if we were just to take the town limits and the property tax from that, it wouldn't nearly fund it anywhere close.
Okay.
Any more ques— Any more questions? Thank you, Dennis. Item nine, public hearing, design review, Pacific Blues Cafe. It's a presentation. There's no action. We—just for the public's information, on the library presentation, the council's not taking any action, or we're just receiving the presentation and providing feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, public hearing, design review, Pacific Blues Cafe. I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, as my primary residence is within 500 feet of this property, and I would recuse myself ordinarily, however—
However, I will also declare a—I would normally step down in this situation, as this business is within 500 feet, and is also a business in the food business, so I have customarily stepped down from that. However, that robs us of a quorum, so I will defer to our town attorney on this one.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, with Vice Mayor Dunbar being absent and two council members—with mayor and council member declaring a conflict due to possible economic interests, that leaves us with two council members who would be able to sit. That would then trigger off what is called the rule of necessity, and that would require a—a selection of the two council members who have recused themselves because of the potential conflict. The way of solving that problem is to—in this case, I would suggest flip a coin, and the town manager has offered his last quarter to be able to flip. And since the mayor probably takes priority, we can have her call it, and you can either call heads or tails. And if you are—if you win the flip, then you would be back in. If the flip goes to Councilmember Chilton, then he would be back in. And then the one that does not prove—does not win the flip would then be required to leave the room, and we'd then have a quorum.
Okay.
Is that me? Steve, would you go first?
Nick, did you call it?
Nobody called it yet, but I'll call heads.
Okay. It's tails.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Councilmember Dutton, would you chair this meeting?
The record should further reflect that I gave—
Boy, well, I—
The record should further reflect that I gave the town manager back his quarter.
Okay, after that drama, we have item nine, is the design review of Pacific Blues Cafe remodel. We have a staff report, please.
Good evening. The item before you is a design review amendment, as it relates to the Pacific Blues comprehensive interior and exterior remodel of that space. And the design review—review has been before you on two different occasions, in 2007 and 2009, and it included revisions in 2009 that the applicant was wishing to make. The renovations have now been completed, and the one—and they can—they include a lot of access and entryway improvements. One, as it relates to the attached building to the north, that is now the wine bar and waiting area, and a new entryway that was made—a direct access to the Pacific Blues Cafe. It includes the removal of the west set of stairs to the deck, and the inclusion of a new set of stairs to the south deck. It includes the painting of the building, the inclusion of new shingles, and new lighting. Also included is the approval that the applicant has elected to defer either for the remainder of the design review approval, which is five years, or—which he may abandon entirely. Includes an extension of the rear deck toward V Marketplace, the addition of an outdoor Includes an extension of the rear deck toward the marketplace, the addition of an outdoor fireplace, a inclement weather awning, and the removal of two non-ADA restrooms, and the replacement with a coffee bar. It also included the replacement of the wood X railing with black iron balustrade. And as I mentioned, since these were part of the design approval, the applicant is free to abandon them if he so wishes. The item before you tonight was not part of the design proposed by the applicant, but was rather included as a condition of approval. And because it was a specific condition, is the exact reason that's before you, that condition required the closure of one of the two entries along the east elevation, and that was at the recommendation of the zoning and design review board, that two entries to one establishment that are side by side could create confusion, mainly because the new entry through the former balloon building on the north was intended as the main entry, reception, and waiting area, whereas the other entrance was the traditional and longstanding entrance to Pacific Blues. The idea was, people wouldn't know where to enter, and they'd walk through dining areas. So these entrances are in addition to the ones on the west and south sides, so essentially there are four ways to enter the building. The applicant is using the waiting room and bar area differently than originally proposed, and it serves more of an independent purpose, and he wants to eliminate routing the restaurant through that area if unnecessary. We also point to the fact that since the approval, the town has installed a new crosswalk on Washington that directly aligns with the original Pacific Blues entry. So for these reasons, staff is recommending that the condition be eliminated, that the closure of the deck be required, and the applicant be free to proceed with its remodel as completed.
Thank you. Any questions, staff?
I've got one question of clarification. Sandra, you said it a little different than it says in the report. It says, "When earlier presented to the council, the former balloon building was to serve as the main greeting reception area." I thought that the approved plans, I remember when Jeff came, and he talked about a wine bar in there. So, I mean, they didn't do that without approval. They had approval for that.
That's correct. The wine bar was approved, yes.
Yeah, okay. It made it sound a little bit like he just did that, and now he wants, you know, forgiveness, which is, I don't think, the case at all, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, the only question I have, so, this is also what Jeff is saying would be useful for his business as well, right? What your recommendations are. Are you both in agreement?
Yes. The request comes directly from the applicant, and staff supports it.
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I would like to hear from the applicant, would he like to say anything?
Hello, Jeff Steve, Pacific Blues. Thank you, Sandra, and the council. Sandra said mostly everything that is needed. It's, when we submitted first time, a year and a half ago or so, maybe two, we did not know at the time that the crosswalk would be such a great entrance coming straight into our door there. And so, it has really increased foot traffic, probably 25 to 50%, just coming in straight across, and it's, it'd be a shame to cut that off right there, because then it kind of will, the bar entrance, or the wine bar entrance is nice, but it's just really accessible just for that, and kind of casual, where that west side entrance off the crosswalk is still pretty much a main entrance, along with the south entrance off the end of the other deck side. So it has been very good. It's eliminated the confusions of the back decks entrance, which was, everybody was crisscrossing and coming in and out, and I think it's worked out well, so.
I think it's nice that you shared with us that a decision that the town made has helped generate traffic.
Yeah, it's good.
And it shows that occasionally, we get some things right that do positively...
And we do that very intentionally.
Are we being schmoozed?
I appreciate that.
Any questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
May I sit down? This time, is there anybody from the public that would like to make any comments in regards to this application? No, seeing none, I'll bring it back here to the council for any further discussion or action.
My only discussion is, this is one of those items I wish never had to come to the council. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2891-10.
I have a comment, though.
Oh, before your second?
Before my second, yes. I just want to say that I think Pacific Blues is such a great local serving business, and it's, gives us free corkage, we've got chamber discounts. You walk in there, it's just, you always see somebody you know. Jeff's always around, it's very friendly, great service. I have absolutely, you know, anything, you know, I think in this resolution you want to do makes a lot of sense, and I personally would probably bend over backwards to help you out in any way we can. So, with that, I'd like to second your motion.
Well, may I finish reading the resolution, then we'll second.
You want to read it? Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
So, my motion included approving the design review for exterior design modifications to Pacific Blues Cafe located at 6525 Washington Street.
I'll second.
That's what I'm seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? You're off the hook, Steve. This way, we'll have to get the mayor back.
Thank you, Bob.
Good job handling the crowd. Got him down, Bob. Good crowd control.
Good job, thank you. Item 10, we need a motion to continue that item to a date certain.
I will make a motion to continue item 10 until July the 6th, 2010.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion carries. Item 11, Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, council. This is a fairly detailed staff report, and I'm going to take a little cue from you as to how much of this you want to spend as we, this is a revisit based on council direction to staff to come back after we discuss some of the fiscal analysis. But briefly, in 2007, Assembly Bill 2987, known as the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, or DIVCA, as it's been nicknamed, became codified by the California Public Utilities Code. In essence, the state took over franchise management and created a structure for a uniformed system, as opposed to individual municipalities technically having control over franchise negotiations. Under that new law, we're allowed to maintain some customer service standards, but the state set the franchise fee maximum at 5% peg contribution, which is at 1%. And PEG is, for example, a public educational government channel, and that's what we broadcast on Napa Valley TV channel 28. In essence, they took away a lot of local control and established a structure. In April, the council, we brought to the council a recommendation to adjust the town's franchise fee from 2% to 5%, and to implement the 1% peg. The council chose not to do that at that point in time. The industry standard in this region, in the greater Bay area, and it's been concluded, there's also a letter from Napa Valley TV with our adjoining jurisdictions, is that the, the standard is 5% franchise fee, and 1% for the peg. I also want to point out that franchise fee paid by utility operators is not a tax. It's a cost of doing business, and like many costs, it is often passed on to the direct consumer. Franchise fees, in essence, are rent paid by the utility operator to the town for the right to use the public right of ways, such as streets and sidewalks, and the delivery of their product. And that's an example of why you don't have a franchise fee on satellite TV, because they're not using the public infrastructure in which to deliver that product. In our community, we have franchise fees from AT&amp;T for phone service, PG&E for gas and electrical, and Comcast. I also would point out that the state law, Comcast is not the only entity that could have a franchise in town. Every once in a while, you may have heard the promotional marketing for AT&amp;T's U-verse. We currently don't have that product because of our density and market share, they've chose not to bring that, but they could be another provider that would be subject to the town's cable television franchise ordinance. Kind of ironic, as you know, the town's had a philosophy of incrementally working on utility undergrounding, and we recently had the pleasure of paying a $40,000 Comcast charge related to two utility undergrounding projects that they, by law, are now able to pass back on to the town. So, in essence, just to give you some comparison, the 2% Comcast paying on gross revenues equates to about 17,000 to 18,000 per year, and that would raise to approximately 51,000 on current projections with the franchise fee. So again, this is an action that the council requested during the budget workshops for us to bring back. If you have any additional questions, we'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions for staff? Councilmember Chilton, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Dutton, question?
No.
Is there anyone from the public that has any questions or comments on this matter this evening? We'll get back to council for further discussion and/or a decision. How does the council wish to proceed?
Can I, I just want to, I was one of the folks who voted to keep it at 2%, even though the state allowed it at 5%. And the town manager is pointing out that this is a fee and not a tax, and I would like to point out that I have a Comcast bill from Napa, and a Comcast bill, my Comcast bill, from Yountville, and on the line, under taxes, surcharges, and fees, is a franchise fee. And if you do the calculation, in Napa, they pay 5%, and in Yountville, they pay 2%. So I really believe that the reason that we did this in the first place, set it at the rate was, why, I mean, this $50,000 is not going to come from Comcast. We all know it's not going to come from Comcast, it's going to come from whomever pays for cable in Yountville. Just because the state law allows us to increase the tax/fee, I don't think it's necessary just because our budget is tighter. And people in Yountville will see that franchise fee go up by two and a half times, and it's only 44 cents online, but somewhere $50,000 is going to be collected over that period. So I continue to oppose raising that fee/tax. And that's why, because it's going to be on your bill, and Comcast is not going to pay it.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I also voted no the last time, so I think Louis took on a very interesting little research project, and I did too. I called up Comcast and tried to get some information, and was actually quite amazed how forthcoming they were. They told me that, because I, one of the questions I asked was, how do you go about setting the fees and setting the taxes? I told them who I was and all this, and they gave me a lot of information, and was based on the formula, on how many people were in the town, what the demand was, and a whole kind of cost benefit type of thing. And then I said, well, you know, we've only set our fees at 2% and not 5%. They don't know anything about that. That's a whole different division, I have to, like, call a different state, you know, which I did. And they based that on what we set as town policy, even though they mistakenly appeared to have sent us a check that we was not consistent with our policy. So, from what they told me, it seemed to be two different things, how they kind of set those numbers, even though I think that's a pretty compelling argument there. What they told me was that, exactly, I think that Steve had pointed out in here, it really is for renting the lines. So, and I think the new, other new information that is in here is now that they can charge us back for their undergrounding. So I am, based on that information, willing to change my opinion, and it's, I agree that I have been influenced by having a tight budget, but I really think I have new information that would allow me now to vote yes.
Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I was in exactly the same position as councilperson Mueller, and I think for those reasons, and I think primarily, I certainly see what Councilman Chilton is saying. It was ironic, I guess we were the only jurisdiction they could think of that hadn't done it. That's beside the point. I guess the other thing was, though, that they didn't hold back when they did the undergrounding. They certainly made sure they charged us for it, so. Again, then, if you're taking a double hit at that particular point, I think you're getting nothing back, and you're paying more out, so I would, I look at it from a different aspect now, and think that we should recoup those funds.
And I was one of the original dissenting votes. I think that, you know, we're looking at a very tight budget here, and those are revenues that we are due, and the state law provides for it, so I would agree that, that I think we should charge the state percentage that we're entitled to of 5%, and realize those gains. So I can support changing the collection fee from 2% to 5%.
And I'd move for the acceptance of the ordinance number 388-10, in order to the town council of the town of Yountville, amending Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations of the Town of Yountville Municipal Code, to add Chapter 5.16 regarding state video franchises operating within the town.
And waive the reading.
And waive the reading, definitely.
I'll second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Dutton?
Yes.
Mayor Saucerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chilton?
No.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
And let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Dunbar is excused.
Thank you.
Question carries.
Item 12, introduction and review of appropriation GAN limit circulation, calculation for fiscal year 2010-11. May we have staff report?
Yes, Mayor, council. This report is provided to give an overview of the annual appropriations limit that is required by state law. So every year is part of our budget adoption. The town does adopt an annual appropriations limit, which has been commonly referred to as the GAN limit, based on the initiative in 1979 that was approved by the voters of the state. The appropriation limit limits the amount of taxes that can be spent by local governments. The law was initially approved in 1979, and then amended with Prop 111 in June of 1990, and at that time, it provided for local government to select from different adjustment factors that would allow to provide for growth, and those could be either the cost of living increase based on state per capita income, or a change to non-residential assessed valuation within the town limits. And the adjustment factors for population growth can either be based on change in population within the town itself, or within the county. The law also provides for certain exemptions, and those are things such as interfund transfers, capital outlay and debt service expenditures, and other mandated costs that have been pushed down by the courts or federal government, and those include FLSA overtime expenses and payment of FICA and/or Medicare tax. The law also provides a provision where the town or a local jurisdiction can go to the voters and ask for an override of the limit as it is calculated and adopted. And the town is in a unique position where we have, currently have an override of $900,000 that will be expiring June 30, 2011. The town has not had occasion to use the override in recent history, but it's almost like an insurance policy. You really want to have it in case you need it. And based on our revenue structure, we currently are funded in our general fund 85, 83% based on our 2010-11 proposed budget. 83% of that general fund revenue is taxes, and that's broken up 57% TOT, 14% property tax, and 12% sales tax. So since we rely so heavily on taxes, we really do need to have an override in place... So since we rely so heavily on taxes, we really do need to have an override in place as tax tends to grow and we grow our local economy. We want to have the flexibility to be able to appropriate, appropriate and possibly spend those revenues for town programs and services in future years. So that's just a general overview, and then I've provided the worksheets that will be included and adopted as part of our budget adoption on June 29. And I would just refer to the front page, page one, where you can see the, it's kind of the summary page, where we have the proceeds of taxes and provide for the exclusions. So we have our appropriations subject to limitation, 4.3 million. And our current year calculation before the override comes in at 4.6 million, so we are under our limit currently. The available capacity leaves us at 7.98% under, and then if we add in our $900,000 current override, you can see we have 1.2 million kind of room to grow, if you will. So that's really the overview of the GAN limit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One thing I'd like to share with the council and the public is when they understand where our primary growth in revenue is going to come, we're taking on new additional rooms, you know, part of our growth. In the future, as rate adjusts and occupancy, we want to ensure that the town can utilize that revenue. Our growth is not coming from property tax. Our growth is coming from increase in TOT revenue, and, you know, since the last override, we will have included the new Bardassano, the Hotel Luca, and the 32-room expansion at the Yountville Inn. So it really is important to maintain the override so that the current council and future councils will be able to allocate and appropriate the funding structure as it grows. Secondarily, I'd also point out that our second significant area is a combination of sales tax, principally derived 75% from restaurants. We have two to three restaurants that are currently fallow, and when those are reactivated, Hotel Vita replacing PJ Steakhouse, our restaurant Vita replacing PJ Steakhouse, Napa Valley Grill is currently closed and pending reorganization and restructuring, and a raising, I should say, a new building that's been purchased, and then the Gordons, which has not been active for a number of years at this point. So there's additional revenue that can be deprived, so I don't want people to think that they're paying for this. This is not the point. Yountville has a very unique funding structure, as we try to explain to people, and we need to be able to have, this is the growth component, and revenue and rate that the hotels and the restaurants charge drive that more than any other thing, and then, of course, the council has the ability to, in the future, disperse that to provide municipal services and otherwise provide betterments in the community.
Does council have any questions for staff?
I do.
Councilmember Chilton?
I have to say this was interesting, because I, this is the first time the GAN limit has come up since I've been on the council, and I always assumed that Yountville exceeded the GAN limit because we have a spectacular revenue base on a per capita basis. Who does the GAN limit apply to if it doesn't apply to us? I mean, what's, are there situations out there that it does?
There are, and I think you have to realize, we have a very unique situation with our property tax base.
Yeah.
You know, over half the town's incorporated limits, one, are exempt from property tax. Secondly, we have a significantly high percentage of property that is taxed in the late 70s and early 80s, and therefore, that's why, as a percent of our total budget, property tax is very insignificant. There are a number of communities that the GAN limit does, and I would say, you know, if we kick in, you know, if we return to a revenue stream approximately in 2008, and the room revenue returns to that with the increased rooms, we would be pushing the GAN limit. We really would. I mean, there's a quick calculation, just using the base 2008 average room rate applied to our total number of rooms when we get to 454, there's approximately a million dollars in potential revenue there. And if some of the promotion and marketing works to improve off-season and midweek occupancy, there's a potential, again, for some revenue increase there. So if you, you know, the finance director shows you that we're, we have about a million two right now in float, so, you know, if we generate a million, that's pushing it, and you get a few other things coming online. Also, as a footnote, debt service is one of the exclusions. So in one sense, the few years we were building the capital fund for the community center, we actually got closer to the GAN, and now that it's actually been converted to debt, that's actually the positive factor. But those are the two biggest things on that, and the reality is, we are always, I believe, going to push that envelope, and depending on our level of expenditure, you know, our reserves don't count against us on that, and some of our conservative approach, and utility enterprise funds don't count towards the calculation of a general fund either.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this topic? Could be a good subject for Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. Bring it back to council for further discussion and interaction.
There's no action.
There's no action on this?
This is an informational item.
Receive the report. Okay, next item.
It helps set the stage for the next item.
The next item, I'm sorry. Item 12, General Municipal Election, 13, I'm sorry, November 2, 2010. Staff report?
Very briefly, you can see you have a fairly comprehensive team approach on this staff report. And basically, what this item is, is the necessary action to put the next override on the ballot. And in the staff report, we are recommending that the council give notice, and also, we will point out that our current override has a one-year out-of-sequence with our election cycle, and one of the things is that the override vote needs to be held at an election where council seats are up. So we need to get that in conformance, so that's one of the things that we'll be adjusting with this. And the proposed resolution includes the language, and the action is really, does the council want, one, you know, you don't have to do this. Staff is recommending that you put the action and call the election, establish the ballot initiative, but I'll let the town attorney weigh in a little more on some of the peculiarities and structures there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there is, as the town manager indicated, with respect to the placing the GAN issue before the voters, that is not required by law that you do. You do, however, have to call for the election of the mayor and two council member seats. If you adopt this resolution, all of those matters will go before the voters. So your options this evening are either to adopt the resolution as presented, or to direct staff to bring back a resolution that only calls for the election of the mayor and two council members.
Does council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Mueller?
I have a couple of questions. So the budgeted $9,500 that takes care of the initiative as well as the election of the mayor and the two council members, that's what's going to cost us.
Right. One of the positive things out of a consolidated election is, you get the benefit, you can, you can have multiple issues on your election, and it rarely changes the cost unless your publication document. So for us, it's always an economy of scale to have multiple issues at a point in time when we have council seats up.
Yep, I agree. We don't want... Then my other questions, and thanks for providing the previous example that's, I assume, has been updated for an argument in favor. And I was asking Michelle earlier, I'm just wondering if we've ever had a argument opposed and what a strategy might be would, if we decided to add both of them just so that people could, I often read both of them so I can fully understand what the whole thing's about. And so sometimes I find that, you know, something in favor and then something opposed gives me a really good sense what I'm voting on. So is, if we put something in place, an argument in favor, would we do that as well? And does that even make sense? And have we ever done that in the past?
If I may attempt to address that question.
Okay, good.
The Elections Code provides a hierarchy of who can supply a ballot argument, either in support or against a measure. In this case, if the town council decides to have Measure P go before the electorate, then the town is actually the one who's proposing the initiative measure. And under the Elections Code provisions, the town council would have first priority in establishing or presenting a ballot argument in favor. Ballot arguments in opposition, since the town council is the one proposing the initiative, would not be entitled to present a argument against. That could be done either by any individual council member or by a group organization who opposes the initiative or any, any member of the electorate. So that's the, that's the hierarchy on either side, but in this situation, because the measure is being put before the voters by the town council, the town council has, under the Elections Code provisions, the first position in that pecking order.
And I think if I hear also your concern, Councilmember Mueller, part of the strategy might be that we need to explain in our proponent message what the consequences are to not doing it. And I think that's very different than when, you know, that's how we explain, if you don't do this, we aren't going to get to use the money, and it goes away. And nobody gets any value for it. We may need to...
Actually, it comes back to each individual and a check in their mailbox, right?
I have no idea how we would track back which hotel visitor gets the return revenue.
Oh, I thought it came back to residents, but it's complicated.
Nope.
Okay. All right, yeah, no.
No, that's what I'm saying, but that, but I think, taking what you're talking about, we may want to revisit making sure that that information's included in our potential message, but typically...
I just think it's a difficult year, and we might want to, I don't know, we can talk about it, do something a little over and above, you know, explaining the value of this to the voters than we've had to in the past, but...
Two points, if I may, and one is to address the question. As I understand, I don't believe there's been a ballot argument in opposition in past years, so it's only been the town council who's put their best foot forward, if you will.
Right.
The second, the second comment, there is a fairly recent California Supreme Court case that defines what cities and towns can do in informing the public. It does allow for the, in this situation, because the town is proposing the initiative, it does allow the town to put forward a ballot argument. But in terms of campaigning beyond that, the town, we could not use tax dollar resources to do so, but we certainly can use tax dollar resources to inform the public of the need for this measure, the benefit of this measure, without ultimately saying, and go out and vote for it.
Well, one of the, just to follow up on that, because one of the things that has always kind of surprised me, again, when this was on the ballot previously, the last time, four years ago, I was not on the council, and my concern was, was there's, it's almost sort of an assumption, it's always passed, people kind of know what this is, there's very little talk about it, and I worry in a unusual election year, shall we say, you know, A, I don't want like a South Carolina Senate situation to come up, or number two, I do worry about the, if somebody was going to put out a statement of opposition, and I want to say B, not truthful, but at least half truthful, A, I assume we get, we would get the rebuttal as the people who are putting the argument forward. Is there any review that happens when somebody puts in an argument that says, what you have to, what you're saying has to be true?
Well, if, if the, if someone files a rebuttal argument that is not accurate, the remedy for that is to take a challenge into court, and the court will then evaluate, and I've actually been involved in those situations, and the court will say, you know, we'll do a reasonable standard approach. If it is reasonably close to the truth, they probably will let it go. If it's not true at all, if the measure, if the, if anyone was in opposition, say, this is going to raise your taxes, which is simply not true...
Send a message to the town that's conjecture, right?
Right, and that could be, the argument could be struck down in its entirety, or in whatever language is not accurate.
But the answer to your earlier question is, our process where, once the registrar receives that, will receive a, we're able to, what's called a rebuttal to the opposition, a town clerk receives that, and then they are able to rebut our rebut, is generally how that goes. So there is a full...
There's a practice in place in the Elections Code that provides for primary arguments and rebuttal arguments to those.
Well, I guess the question on that, it says in this resolution that prior arguments, arguments in favor of opposition to any proposition must not exceed 300 and shall be filed not later than June the 29th, which is like really soon, in two weeks. So we have to make sure that we, how are we going to do that?
Staff has a, you know, in anticipation and trying to do good legwork, we have a draft that we can provide to you and work on some additional wordsmithing.
Got a stack of paper.
So, I mean, that is something that, if the council chooses to call the election and direct that we author this, we are prepared to work. You could, in the past, you've established an ad hoc committee to work with staff and bring it back, and we could have this item on your agenda for the special meeting of the 29th when the budget's being approved for your final wordsmithing.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I understand what the council people are saying, and I guarantee you, there isn't five people in this town could even tell you what the GAN act is. And all I'm afraid of is you start opening up, not that we shouldn't, but it's going to, you're going to get into more, anyway, it's, it's going to be a lot of problems, and I don't think you can explain it to a lot of people, they'll never understand it. But that being said, maybe it's a point for either here or maybe ask Mr. Rogers in his column, he could explain it to them, but God forbid the questions you're going to get.
Can I ask one more question? You made the comment about the fact that this expires, I think it's June 30th of next year, and it doesn't sync up with elections. This doesn't change, does this change that? I didn't see anything that said this is going to change that term to expire at an election. The reason I thought that actually seemed somewhat advantageous is that if somehow there was some chicanery that was involved, at least you'd have six months to try to have a special election and fix that problem.
Actually, in the, in the four years commencing...
Yeah, the resolution...
Where does it say that?
In the language of the question...
Right on the bottom of the resolution, in that box, on the yellow box.
Two, and now they're four.
Says four-year period commencing with the fiscal year, which would...
Okay, so it still ended the fiscal year in four years. Okay, good. Thank you.
I have one more question, one of those what ifs. So what if it's voted no? Do we get a second stab at this, like, in six months or a year, or what are the consequences?
If, if, for whatever reason, this measure did not pass, our GAN limit does not expire until 2011, we would have, well, actually, we may not, because the Elections Code, I'd have to go back and confirm, but generally, you can only have the same measure be presented to the voters once every 12 months.
12 months, okay. Okay.
You know, based on our current projections, it would not probably be an issue for the next year, but it would be something that if it were to fail, it would be, I think, significantly important for us to get it back on at the next appropriate election opportunity.
Any more questions for staff? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter? All right, seeing no public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion or direction.
So, Madam Mayor, there are three recommendations on here. The first is to adopt the resolution, holding the general municipal election and all the appropriate functions that come with it. Second is determining whether or not to participate in preparing an argument in favor, which we just talked about. And then third is to direct the town attorney to prepare the impartial analysis for Measure P.
Now, we have two.
And that timeline, two might be missing. I just noticed in my report it's missing, so I can, it was cut off. So in my staff report online, it says, determine whether or not to participate in the preparation of ballot arguments, and if participating, determine who will be preparing, signing the arguments. So...
Okay. Is council clear?
You want to read all that, Bill?
No, I'm not going any further than number one. No, I'm not going any further than number one.
I'm fine with calling the election, Part One, I'm also fine-
Do you want to read all this in the version?
You want to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
Do you want me to read that?
Well, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, how we're going to get to our final version here, I guess.
Okay.
Especially, maybe we, I would like for us to kind of discuss, like, we have a draft here, I don't know if anyone has seen it or not, I don't like the part about where the envy of Napa County, I don't want to, I don't want to poke the bear here at all, so, and, you know, do we really need, I think Steve had a good suggestion, you know, if you don't do this, this is going to happen. Does that seem like something that we should add to this, or just kind of leave it short and sweet that, you know, yes, vote's going to continue to do all these services? That's kind of where I'm at right now, I'm not sure the best way to put the best foot forward.
I've been making notes and editing the edited version, so I'd be happy to work if the council wants to have an ad hoc committee of two people we can work on, or if you want to work on the draft, but within the confines, we are able to get a consequences of a no vote put in there, edit a few things to keep us within our 250-word limit.
Take out the envy part. I mean, we could have an ad hoc committee, but I think we really need to figure out what the council direction is before we know what to do.
If you're comfortable, you could provide direction to the town manager to edit this consistent with your direction, and then we'll have it ready for you for the 29th for adoption.
Okay.
And even then, if you wanted to edit it further, you could until 5:00 PM.
All right, then I would say, you know, put in the consequences, because if it's in there, you can always take it out on the 29th. If it's not in there, then we'll all be just looking at each other, wondering what to do.
But I will point out that in order to meet the 5:00 o'clock deadline, our meeting will begin at 4:30 on the 20, 4:00 on the 29th, because the clerk will need to take a quick timeout to excuse herself to get the document sent over to the county to meet the 5:00 o'clock deadline. But be happy to, you've given us some good feedback, and I think staff can fine tune this consistent with your thoughts and feedback.
I can just make a motion with the resolution number, I'd be fine with that.
Can you, can you read it off, please, or I'll read it off for you if you'd like?
No, I'd be more, I can read the whole thing off.
Just for the benefit of the public and-
Okay, so this is very important, I agree, that is a great thing, good, very good suggestion. I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number 2893-10, calling for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2010, for the election of mayor, to council members, and for the submission to the voters of one question related to Measure P, increase in appropriation, the GAN limits, might want to-
Limit.
Limit, and requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Napa to consolidate and render specified services to the town relating to the conduct of the statewide general municipal election 2010.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nye, close, none, that motion carries.
I would think that we've given direction on two and three, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Staff informational reports.
There's two reports here. One is about the wastewater treatment plant, came to you last month, and this is just an update to let you know that we're about to turn it on, turn on the upgrade. So the control panels are in place, and by the end of the month, we should have those working and water going through the chlorine contact chamber. So we'll be doing punch list work in July and hopefully bring a notice completion July 20th. The other item is for the streetlight on Fennel Road at Hopper Creek, this would be a new streetlight, just want to let you know the progress of that, and also that PG&E has essentially what's called, I call it, a pass-through tax, that's the income tax component of contribution, and essentially, the reason we want to bring this to you was that in January, it went from 22% up to 34%, and what they're saying is that there's state and federal taxes that they're passing through to us to pay, which is in the attached invoice here. We paid 22% at the community center, we paid 22% on a couple other small new projects. This is only on new construction, it's not on, if we replace a streetlight. Since this is a new streetlight, then we do need to pay the tax. So the cost here is just for PG&E, we still need to buy the light, and we still need to pay a contractor to install the light and hook it up to the electrical grid. So if you have any questions, I can answer those on those two reports.
Graham, could you just share what the amount of the PG&E tax is, because it is astronomical in comparison to the actual cost of the purchase and installation of the light? The public needs to understand, again, some of those redirected costs and everything.
So for their, essentially, we're paying for not just the cost of the work that PG's doing, but also the design, so the subtotal on the invoice is $3,771, 34% of that is $1,200, so the total cost just for PG&E for the streetlight will be $5,000. I anticipate another $5,000 for the paying, buying the light and having the contractor install it. Then there's the annual cost of providing electricity, which is over $100 a year.
Is there any way we can locate a streetlight that would be, it's the location, right? Because there's nothing there now, there's no service to it, there's no utilities to it, there's-
And we wanted to bring this to your attention, because obviously, when we look at our replacement program, obviously, we want to get credit for the existing lights, but if we add some, and the council's asked us to take a look at some areas out of concern for safety, we just wanted to share with you so that you're upfront and the community's upfront with what the costs are, when we bring a site and say, you know, we've got a $10,000 to $12,000 cost to bring a pole where service didn't exist. For example, Midtown was a replacement, we did not have that same charge, although, to me, well, I almost fell out of my chair, this is one of those ones that just frustrates me, along with some other costs, because I can't see where there's $5,000 of cost that PG incurs in us putting the light there.
And this is going to be on the school side of the creek, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
Where the pedestrian bridge is, it'll be on the south, be on the east side of the creek, essentially right across from Mrs. Barnizano's driveway.
Okay. On the east side?
East side of the creek, north side of Fennel.
Correct, it's not on, we don't, we don't have electricity on the school side, that would be even more expensive, because we have to bring it. We are able to actually access some of the electrical that is adjacent to the Girardi Place development.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we would probably have, if we put it on the other side, we've got to run and trench electrical all the way and probably, I don't even want to guess how much.
That's why I thought $5,000, is that okay?
Well, yeah.
No, no, PG, not just to do it, they don't do any work.
I understand.
That $5,000 doesn't get you any electrical conduit or anything. We still have to do all that.
Nice. It's for the privilege.
Not just to come out and inspect, make sure we hooked it up right.
Got it.
And the design.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I back up, so the wastewater treatment plant?
Sure.
There's nothing in here about budget, how you doing on your budget?
We're doing fine, there have been change orders, but we're within the contingency, so that-
We'll finish within the contingency?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So $11,000 for a streetlight?
We're just, it's an informational, just as we go forward, like I say, I didn't want there to be any surprises when you see what we're going to-
Yeah, I know. We can go to Home Depot and get something, we can hang up over there.
Can we get Jason to put a little spotlight?
Yeah.
Okay, council reports, flood control, we met last week, I think, their schedule somehow got kind of out of whack, and we're meeting the second and fourth rather than the first and third, so we met on the 8th. And we needed four fifths to take some property for easement right away, and also to preliminarily approve some budget numbers, so we'll be, someone will be meeting again on the 22nd to approve their final budget numbers. NCTPA is tomorrow, that meeting's tomorrow. Napa River Watershed?
We are definitely going to meet in June, it's going to be the last Thursday, we've had a lot of just ad hoc, and we kind of do a lot of things by email, so I will have a report in July.
Okay, Yountville Elementary School, ad hoc committee update.
Just a quick update, last night before, well, let me back up, two weeks ago or so, myself, Vice Mayor Dunbar, and Town Manager Steve Rogers met with Superintendent Glazer and the head of the, essentially their CFO, and discussed some bullet point outlines of an agreement between the community and the school district. What we're, where we're at right now is, we've kind of traded back some general parameters of, here is what the district will tell us in terms of the operating deficit for the school, and we've made it very clear to them that we are not interested in being a, we being the community, a entity that every year, they come back and just ask for more money or, and say, if you don't give us more money, we're going to close your school. What we have agreed to is a baseline, we're working on agreeing to, is a baseline deficit that mirrors this about $40,000 deficit the school currently faces. It does have some agreements that if the funding situation improves for the state, for the district, whether that's a parcel tax, or whether that's state revenues, that those would be, those changes would be relooked at for the school, and if the school goes back into black, that we're not the only school who's paying money for nothing, shall we say. On the flip side, they also have an understanding, the community is being asked, something that's a little bit unique in, in the district, there are other small schools that, for various reasons, are going to remain open, so therefore, they understand that we need a maximum amount of money that they're ever going to ask us for. And we're talking about, you know, a five or 10-year agreement. We're really in the kind of situation where we're going to establish the foundation, they're going to make a statement in the public that as long as the foundation, the community hold up their end of the bargain, that they're going to hold up their end of the bargain. And if not, then if we don't hold up our end of the bargain, then they can relook at the issue, and if they don't, we have a piece of paper they agreed to in public that said, we're not going to do that. So I think it's really positive, John Glazer, outgoing superintendent, who's retiring in this month, has been really, really positive in working with us, he really wants to keep the school open, I believe the board really wants to keep the school open, and they're looking for, you know, I think, something that's fair. And we're also working with the PTA, and you referenced some fundraising that's already in existence, one thing that we kind of realize in looking through all the numbers is the pasta feed money, the school district does bizarre accounting, and I'm being kind, and one thing they never looked at was the fact that pasta feed writes a check to Yountville Elementary School, which just goes into the pot, and they didn't really recognize that money as the school being credited, so we're making sure those kind of things are being credited towards the school. They haven't really looked at the fact that the town pays $15,000 a year in rent with, despite the library's cost allocation methods, don't really have any serious impact on the cost of the school district, so they're going through and recognizing those type of things. And I have much confidence that they will recognize the $4,500 of grant funding that we gave tonight. So what I found out last night, quite to my surprise, before the council meeting, I went down to John Glazer's retirement party for 15 minutes, and he told me that he has a discussion item on the Thursday agenda at the board to go through our partnership agreement we talked to, that the, their attorney has already reviewed, which I haven't seen a copy of yet, I'm trying to get a copy of that. But I, talking to him, it's basically what we had discussed, and I am going to work real hard tomorrow to get that, I've already talked to them today, but to try to get a copy of that beforehand.
Good. Thank you for that report.
And then, can I move on to the next-
Yes.
Forgotten, very important committee, LAFCO.
Sorry.
Who used to work at LAFCO, I didn't put it on the agenda, thank you.
Sorry.
I'm kidding.
It's okay, I can take it.
I'm kidding, sort of, yes. LAFCO met on June the 1st and took a very significant action, which was the approval of the expanded sphere of influence for American Canyon, based on mostly, on part of many years of negotiations between the county and American Canyon, as they fought for decades over where the city limits of American Canyon will expand to. So there's about, I think it's about 300 acres of land, mainly in the area of the old concrete plant, they have, that designated is what they call the town center designation, they want to create an identity and more of a town center for American Canyon. LAFCO did exclude a part of their request that was currently zoned agricultural, and they had not specified what that land would ever be used for, so that piece of it never changed from the sphere, but there's an expectation within a couple months that now American Canyon will come back and put the annexation proceedings forward to annex to where their sphere of influence is. So that was a fairly, a very significant event, and I think it's actually good for the county and the city of American Canyon. So that was LAFCO.
Good, thank you. Anything, Councilmember Dutton?
I just had a couple of things. One, we're off and running with the food waste composting program here in town, I think the outfield deli, as a matter of fact, is starting shortly, I know you got your container.
Got our bin today.
Bingo.
Were you back there looking?
Yeah. And a few others that I think is, within the next, the next meeting, I'll be able to report significant other progress. Couple of, one thing too, Wednesday, up at the allied council meeting, they had a few announcements, and one, one concerned the member center, which, you know, has been under renovation for the last, I would say, year and a half to two years, appears that's probably going to open up in August. Also, a lot of the, it appears that they are going to outsource a lot of the work that has been done by members themselves, I can't say that for sure, I've just heard things, but it, I think that's sort of the way that things have been going around, and they will be doing it. And that would be running their snack bars, or the tavern, the cafeteria, they have this type of thing. The other thing that came up, Graham, I don't know if you knew this, I don't, hopefully it'll affect us somehow, they received half a million dollars to upgrade their wastewater treatment operation, so it sounded like most of it was going to go into sewer infrastructure and that type of thing, though, that certainly couldn't hurt us, I'm sorry?
Yeah, plugging the leaks in the lines that generate I and I would be a great start.
Well, they've got half a million dollars to do it. The other one is very interesting, and I know, since it hasn't been that too long, since most of us were up at the cemetery, memorialist services, they have received a grant in excess of $2 million, and what it will, is going to do is bring the cemetery up to what they call national standards. And there's a fellow named Jorgensen that's going to be involved with it. I believe Marcellus had also won in, thank you, they said Chico, an area up there, that apparently has a cemetery, a veteran cemetery. But what this amounts to, is very interesting, is, first of all, they replace all of the grass, I guess there's a certain type of grass they use, all of the, all of the headstones will be virtually erected properly, lined up perfectly, as you see in the pictures and what have you. They're probably are going to get some type of a kiosk in that area up there that will identify, you know, who's in buried and what plots, restrooms up in that area. In addition to that, two full-time people to take care of the cemetery, and this is all funded from outside sources that obviously they don't have to put up, so this was quite a big coup, I think, for them there, and apparently, it's going to start rather soon. So, I mean, it's, as they mentioned at the services, it's a much nicer place than it was eight, 10 years ago, and it looks like in three, two or three years, it's going to be even more beautiful than it is now, so just to pass those along, you'll probably read more about that.
Great, lucky, lucky for them, good news. Any more reports, comments?
I have a couple of quick tidbits. One, we want to acknowledge the contribution of the Yountville Bachi Club, as they helped make a contribution towards a lighting improvement project at the Bachi Courts, and the town is completing that project, and it may actually be completed, and somebody that rolled- is completing that project, and it may actually be completed, and somebody that ruled on Monday may be able to confirm that. If not, it's, it's actually, the contractor's deadline is the end of this week, but the project's been moving along. And I have to apologize, I was remiss in our earlier introductions of not introducing our new Parks and Recreation Director, Samantha Holland-Wegner, and her first meeting with us, as she adjourns at the slightly cramped edge of the table, but we're very pleased and excited to have her on board, and she's now in her second week with the town.
And just to let her know, this, we usually don't finish this early, so.
This is, this is, this is way unusual, that's why we're dragging our feet here to kind of stretch it out, we're usually finished by about 10:30, 11 o'clock, so. No, you know, we had a couple items continued, so. Future agenda items, award bid for the Yount Street Utility Undergrounding Project, adopt the town's final budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011, special meeting, strategic plan workshop on June 29th, 2010, at Community Hall from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. We have no closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn to the next meeting on the 29th?
Move to adjourn to June 29th, 2010.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you, good night.